It's cooler than what I was expecting. It is not on my calendar. Also, it's something to be engaged in.
She is. Right after the public comment, right after the awards, public comment. You guys ready?
Yeah, let's go.
Alright, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Zachary Hilton?
Here.
Tom Brady?
Here.
Patrick Potter?
Here.
Jonathan Polak?
Here. Commission Secretaries, report on posting of the agenda.
Tonight's agenda was posted on June 21st, 2019, at 11:45 AM.
Alright, next up is ceremonial items, this is awards and presentations, the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award, acknowledging Anne Jasper from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. Come on up, Anne, Sean's gonna meet you down there.
So, for our monthly BPA award, honoring someone else, biking and walking issues in Gilroy, we have Anne Jasper from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. Anne has been, for more than, more than three years, probably five years, been kind of the organizer of educational events in Gilroy having to do with biking and walking, at the elementary school especially, and serving all of them the last few years. So she has always been very well organized for to communicate, and has put an enthusiastic base for getting kids excited about learning how to walk and bike safely. And I work with our several bike rodeos, and we also have a great time educating kids how to ride their bikes safely in all kinds of different situations that they might encounter when they're trying to get around town or get to school. Really appreciate it having her with the rant ending for public health. We're not sure if we'll be seeing much of her anymore. And we want to make sure to honor her before she leaves, because she's just been a pleasure to work with and done a great job making sure that all the schools in Gilroy get served, and that she encourages the ones that need encouragement to get started with education in their schools.
Come on. You can come up, at least.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. See you at Bike Summit.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, next up is Presentations of the Commission. This is a moment for the public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Would anybody like to speak? Alright, see none. Next up will be Measure B, Funding Projects Education Encouragement. Lauren Ledbetter from VTA, welcome. Thank you.
So, I was asked by Zachary Hilton to come and talk a bit about what we need to do in terms of bicycle pedestrian funding, with some specific questions about NDA, education intervention work, plus as well as the Bicycle Assistance Program, and how that relates to everything, and we developed that. So, I've put together a presentation that contains a very big overview of bicycle pedestrian funds that we distribute, as well as a little bit more detail on Measure B. I was trying not to talk to Zachary, but feel free to just answer or interrupt your question or just keep doing. I really enjoy this stuff, hopefully you will too. So, and then just a tiny bit about me. I am the senior transportation coordinator at VTA, and I manage the bicycle pedestrian program. We are housed- Is that better? I can also top off.
There you go. Thank you.
No problem, thank you. We are housed in the Congestion Management Agency portion of VTA, which is separate from the transit side of things. And as part of that agency, one of the main things that we do, we plan, do long-range planning for all types of transportation, including walking and biking. And we also are in charge of distributing a lot of the funding that comes from state, the federal government, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the region. And now, of course, we're lucky enough to have 2016 MFD, which provides bicycle pedestrian funding, as well as other transportation related fundings that we found to be. When we get the funding, it all comes with each entity that touches the money puts their own stamp on it. And it always comes to us with restrictions and requirements and regulations about what we should fund it, how we need to distribute it, and that sort of thing. We also tend to add a little bit to the funding, but I think in general, VTA tries to be as broad as possible when we're developing how we distribute the funding. There's essentially two ways we distribute transportation funding. One is by formula, where you look at something like population or roadway miles, can we distribute it to the 15 cities in the county, with the San Clara County based on the percentage that they have, whatever that criteria is. The other is through a competitive process, and I'll go in a few slides down, kind of go through the general process that we do. We were developing scoring criteria for a competitive process. When it's competitive, we ask cities to submit projects. We have a scoring committee, we score them, we distribute funding that way. We have five now, main sources of funding for walking and biking in the county. One Bay Area grant, otherwise known as OAB. The Vehicle Missions Reductions based at Schools, otherwise known as BURBS. That's our Saferoute to School program. Transportation Fund for Clean Air, otherwise known as TSCA, Transportation Development Act, Article 3, which is abbreviated TDA Article 3, the TDA 3, and then the Measure. So I wanted to get sort of a sense, make sure we all kind of had a common understanding of when we have, when we're talking about money, how much money we really need for. Each cube, I have a few slides, and these cubes represents $1 million. So with $1 million, so curve extension at one corner is about, depending on what table work we have to do, it could be 250,000 or 50,000 or so. One mile bike lanes can be about 600,000. A new traffic signal on the order of a million. One mile bicycle pedestrian path on the order of 3 million, depending on a variety of factors, right? But a new bicycle pedestrian bridge on the order of 10. Those are, that's kind of what we're thinking about. So, I actually recently looked at funding over the last 10-year period, and gathered all the funding that we distributed through those programs I had on the first slide, and found that we programmed 200, over $200 million to bicycle pedestrian projects. This includes funding that's specifically for projects like a bike trail, or a bike in a bike lane, or a sidewalk improvement, as well as funding that, let's say, for roadway rehabilitation and restriping, but included a bike lane is part of it. There are certainly other projects that aren't included in this, like highway redesign projects that improve the connection for walking and biking through that freeway interchange. Those aren't included in this. This is purely bike type programming, or something that was a roadway project that is more like a complete streets project. And this is what it looks like right here. So this is about 200 million or so. The largest funding source by far is the One Bay Area Grant. We allocate the funds every four years. The schedule is dictated by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. This is mostly federal transportation dollars, as well as some state transportation funding. Think about 60% of the funds are distributed competitively through essentially a complete streets competitive grant program, and the remaining 40% are given to cities by formula. The competitive funding is restricted by NTC to only projects that are within what are called priority development areas. Cities are allowed to determine where they want to have priority development areas. These states certain criteria. BURBS grants are 25 million. This, again, is also, it's tied up with the OAB funding, it's the same sort of funding source. And that was, so that's every four years. And then the two smaller sources, the TDA 3 and the TSCA, those go every year. BURBS is competitive, all of that money is competitive. So recently, it could be used for both education encouragement, as well as for infrastructure. Now it's just, VTA has said that it's only going to be for infrastructure because of using the Measure B education encouragement money to help offset that, as well as increase funding for education encouragement. TDA 3 funding is, part of it is, I think 75% of it or so is dedicated to formula, and the remaining 25% is a competitive program, and then TSCA is all competitive. So on average, looking at this number right here, keep in mind, some of the money we do every four years, some of the money we do every year. It's about 24.4 million that we program for bike and pedestrian projects and activities. With Measure B, we're increasing this by 8.3 million, so it's pretty significant increase. So it's going to go up to about 32.7 million per year. It's a really great source. This is what it looks like. So this is assuming everything else stays the same, and we add in Measure B, this is what it looks like. Measure B is about 25% of the overall bicycle pedestrian fund that VTA will be programming. This is a snapshot of a year, although of course, the money doesn't come out every year. I have, one of the handoffs I gave you has this, as well as descriptions of each of the major funding sources. So I'm gonna talk a bit, any questions on this section before I shift to Measure B? You guys all excited by it, or is it?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, so bicycle pedestrian allocation for Measure B. In November 2016, San Clara County voters voted to support a half-sat sales tax measure over 30 years. The sales tax has nine program areas. One of them is bicycle pedestrian program. It's 250 million for this allocation over 30 years. You can see the middle column, final sum, that's the 250 million. The VTA Board of Directors adopted program guidelines soon after the measure was passed. And the program guidelines break the bike and ped allocation into these three categories. Education encouragement, 15%, capital projects, building capital projects, 80%. And planning studies, these are planning studies for capital projects, like a feasibility study for a complete street, or a trail, or something. That's 5%. The 15 and the 5 are all minimum, or not minimums, but maximums. So you could end up, if you don't have a lot of funding, or a lot of people who want, or project sponsors that want to do the planning studies, it could be that. You can see the dollar amounts over 30 years in the middle column, and then the annual on the right, and that's just divided by 30. The way the program guidelines are set up is it's 250, not a percentage, of the sales tax measure. And that was done in part to protect it, because at some point, when Part Phase 2 comes in, it's going to start sucking a lot of money from the measure. And VTA staff wanted to, the board, wanted to make sure that this was preserved at that point in time, and all the money starts getting sucked into part. For the link down there, you can see the program guidelines for all nine project areas. So, going to how we're redistributing within the bike and ped program area. So the education encouragement program is going to be distributed by formula, roughly based on population. And I have a slide on that a little later. We're going to be giving the money to cities every two years with our annual budget cycle. It's a reimbursement basis, and you do not need to have, actually, I don't know the answer, if you need to have a 10% match modifier to queue to for this. The status of that right now is, we, our programming team has a draft funding agreement into the cities. They're having their lawyers review it and comment, and we're asking for comments back from city staff, I think a bunch of that, or so. We need to have that funding agreement signed before we can start reimbursing cities for the work that they're doing through education encouragement.
Lauren, can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So, it's reimbursable, but isn't there dedicated funding that just like sits in an account year over year and accumulates?
At this point, we have, that's my understanding that because, so, because we were sued, and we weren't able to spend any of the money for the first, say, two and a half, almost two and a half years of the sales tax being in place, we do have a pot of money right now that's been accumulating interest. But moving forward, it's not, you know, we're going to be spending that. It's not like we have, it's not like we all of a sudden got an infusion of 250 million dollars to save on sales tax. And it could actually fluctuate depending on sales tax.
So the percentage that Gilroy would get would be the same every year, but we would need to spend that, you can't save that for next year. If we're doing like an open streets event, and we want to save two years for the cost of it, can we do that?
Yes, yes, you can. And those, so I'll tell you what I know, but the best person to ask of that question is Jane Shin in the programming and the grants team, because she's developing all of the intricacies of that, and that's written into the funding agreement as well. I believe you can bank the funding for four years, as long as you tell VTA what you're planning on using it for. So you don't have to spend it all at once. You have three or four years to spend it.
But it is like a typical government where you either, you have to use it or you lose it, sounds like?
I think that we'll try and figure something out. They end up going into the pot of funding and go to other cities.
Yeah.
But as far as I know, like, the money is going, it's going to, we're not going to shift it away from education encouragement. But I think four years to spend some of the money, and it's not even all of the money. You have to do the four years to start spending the money. We want, we want to make it easy for you to spend the money.
Did you say that some cities are already doing some things, and they're going to turn something and hoping to be reimbursed?
I don't know the answer to that, San Jose might be, but I'm not sure. So, with capital projects, and I have a slide on education encouragement as well as capital projects further down. That is going to be competitive. We're doing it a little bit differently. We are going to be issuing a call for being included on a tenure list. And then, once that list has been adopted by the Board of Directors, we're going to be distributing the money, or making available for distribution, money every two years with our budget cycle. And I'll talk a bit about how that process may work in a bit. Currently, we are developing the scoring criteria, and they'll be going in July to the VTA BPA, the technical advisory committee, which is our city staff and the transportation public works departments, as well as our policy advisory committee, which is elected officials. Hopefully, the board will adopt it in August.
Do you know anything about the scoring criteria yet?
Yes.
So we've heard that cities that have better transit will score higher automatically? Is that true? Projects that are near transit?
It depends on the project, and I didn't really, but I can, let's say that, and I can talk a bit about that a little bit later, about some of the criteria, that'll have to be prepared though.
Thank you.
For the planning studies, we are envisioning that that will be a competitively more standard call for projects, where every two years, we say we have this much amount of money available, submit your projects, cities will submit projects, we'll most likely have scoring criteria to decide which projects to fund, but we haven't started that process yet. Imagine that process is actually getting started now, because we just were able to, Jane was just able to hire someone to do that for us, she was waiting for us.
What's the time is done?
And that would be for updating our bike master plan.
Those are transportation plans?
So, the way it's written, it's not for general master plans. You can use TDA 3 funds for that, but this was intended to support capital projects. So it would have to be for a more specific capital project.
You mean like the design of a capital project?
It would be anything up to where you started environmental, so it could be a feasibility study of a specific project, the outreach for a specific project. It could be looking at different alignments for something, that sort of thing. But a citywide master plan for biking or walking is not one of the competitive planning studies under this. The intention for this was to build infrastructure. So, my slide here with the education encouragement, if you can read it. So this is, the formula is based roughly on population, but when we did that, it led us to Salto Hills and Monteserino House. That's low, well, this is just the way the formula is set up. They don't have zero people in there. But they were ending up getting, you know, less than $10,000 annually. You can't do anything with that. So we did $10,000 off the top to the cities automatically. And then with the remaining balance, we split it based on the population percentage. And so you can see the numbers. Now, San Jose is about half the population, a little bit over half the population in the county, so they get about half the money, so this is the annual amount. And in addition to that, VTA is doing off-the-top funds to share with the county, to do county-wide education encouragement programming, and that's 250 right now. Gilroy is, this is the amount for Gilroy, 35,648. One thing I should say is, we, the Measure passed, the board approved funding for the cities for the, starting, I think it was in, was the 18, 19 fiscal years, so the years ending June 18th, and June 19th, so coming up here. That money has already been approved by the board, so that is available to the cities as soon as the funding agreement is signed. Plus, earlier this month, the board approved the funding for the next two fiscal years. So, to get started, you actually have four times this amount available to you to get reimbursed. And then after that, it's going to start, you know, the next two budget cycle, it's going to drop down to that times two. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Do you know if there's any plans for how the countywide money will be used at this point?
Yes. So I've been working on it with Public Health Department, Ellen Palos-Benavidez involved in it as well. And the county is considering hiring a staff person, and that will pay for, that will pay for a staff person, and then have some money available to do other work. And the staff person would run their Safe Route to School program, and most likely do several other things. One of the things that VTA is looking at is a safety campaign for walking, biking, and riding throughout the county. I actually brought to the VTA BPA some ideas of what the money could be used for, and received a lot of feedback from that, from the BPA. So I can share with this BPA, the memo that we brought, and I think it was in February or March of this year. So that process is ongoing right now.
So do you know if, when something starts happening with that, if equity will be taken into account? Speaking from the Gilroy, you know, Santa Clara County's very large and pretty wealthy county, but Gilroy is kind of the area where a lot of lower-income people live here, as a high percentage of the population.
Yeah.
So what we would hope that we would, you know, get some of those services, and it wouldn't all go to San Jose or something.
So we haven't gotten to that level of detail. We're more thinking about what types of large, like larger-scale activities we'd be interested in funding. I know that the Public Health Department is, is, I believe, Public Health Department is running the Safe Route to School program here. Is that correct? And you're, okay, Ellen's saying, yeah, yeah, yes. And I think that there's discussion about continuing that work with having full-time staff person being able to do that. But that's certainly totally open discussion, and it's good to get the input on that now. Any other questions on this one? The capital program. We are developing a financially constrained prioritized list of capital projects. By financially constrained, what that means is we have a set dollar amount, and the list can't exceed that. In order to be eligible to even be on the list or even compete for it, you must be on attachment A of the Measure. And on the Measure B website, I believe that there is a link to the Measure language. It was passed by the voters, and they see attachment A in there. And that includes a list of many projects. Most of them are trail projects, but it also includes the Countywide Bicycle Plan, and it also includes the Pedestrian Access to Transit Plan. So Gilroy has projects in the Pedestrian Access to Transit Plan that would be eligible, as well as lots of bicycle projects that are within the bicycle plan, the Countywide Bike Plan, that would be eligible. The list will cover, like I said, 10 years, that's about $67 million. The scoring committee will need to be three member agencies staff, member agencies are the agencies that make up VTA, so it's all the cities and the county plus VTA, as well as three members from our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and one VTA staff person. And these folks won't be appointed, they'll be volunteers, and things are going to be a signature of time, actually, to review all the projects. So once we've developed the list and all, every two years, VTA will distribute the funding to the projects on the list that are ready to advance. If there's more projects that apply during any one fiscal budget cycle than we have money for, staff will work with the project sponsors to identify projects to fund. I have some thoughts on it, based on what I've seen us do in the past, but I don't know exactly what the programming and grants team has in mind. In the past, for other projects, we've looked to see if a project has another grant source that's going to expire, if they don't get the money now, we would prioritize that. If you're looking at two projects, and one is ready to construct in a month, and the other is going to take a few months or half a year, we would prioritize the project that was closer to being constructed. We also look at geographic equity. And then, we would of course look at the actual prioritization of the projects on the list, and see if a project, if a higher project and a lower project were competing, we would end up doing the higher projects. I suspect, though, since what we want to do is to actually build projects, the priority would most likely be on what projects are ready to go now, and what projects we're funding if we didn't give them the money now. Any questions on that?
Do you know, off the top of your head, ours, our projects?
No, you will decide what projects you want to submit.
Well, because there's some that have already been like out there.
On the Measure B?
On the Measure B list already.
Oh, yes, yes, there are, I mean, it's- There are, I mean, it's broader than that though, because there's the countywide bike plan and pedestrian access to transit plan. So I should have looked at it before I came down here. There's definitely some trail projects.
The Lions Creek.
Yeah, Lions Creek Trail Project is, I know that those two are on there. So does that mean that the city has to go through the competitive grant to get that? But it, but it, since we're already listed.
Those are eligible.
They're eligible to get funded.
Yeah, the listing just shows that you're eligible. That listing of projects though, was about 10, the cost of developing those projects is about 10 times the cost of how much money we have available.
Uh, I understand.
Does that make sense?
No, that makes sense.
Moving forward, so it's just who first comes first served and ready to go.
Yes, in a way, yeah.
And that's a scoring criteria that you haven't developed yet for those projects?
Yes. Well, I can, I can talk, maybe now is the time to talk about, if I can remember it off the top of my head, the scoring criteria that we're looking at. In the description of the program that was passed by the voters, there was some, there was a paragraph about what the bicycle pedestrian projects would fund. And I don't have it memorized, but it included things like bicycle pedestrian projects that improve safety and access to schools, transit, employment centers. Projects that are safe, that improve the comfort and convenience of bicyclists and pedestrians. So the scoring criteria that we have developed now include ways to measure those types of things. Because we wanted to make sure the projects would meet the goals of what the voters specifically voted for. So we look, projects get scored on how close they are to transit, employment centers, schools. So in answer to your question before, if you had a project that was near a transit center, yes, it would probably score higher than the same that project that wasn't near a transit center. We look at safety. So history of collisions or whether there's a demonstrated safety issue that the project would improve. We look at project readiness. So you get a score if a project is closer to completion. We looked at community outreach and whether the project was supported by a comprehensive community outreach process that came up with the project and embedded the project. We looked at match. And you get extra points if you go above the 10% minimum match for your project. We'll be capped at a certain point. We looked at the number of people the project would serve. Either by looking at existing use or predicting how many people you think would actually use the project in the future. We have points for whether the projects' support is, is within a community of concern, which is MTC's definition of disadvantaged communities. And we may have some others, and that's just off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. This is the process we go through for developing scoring criteria. This is pretty generic for any type of program we do. First, we work with city staff to develop scoring criteria. Then we bring that draft to our committees, including our BPAC, where we get input from the committees. And we revise it and we bring it back on time typically for an action item to allow the committees to say whether they think the board should adopt it or not, or provide additional direction. And then the board of directors adopts the criteria. We develop an application and we issue a call for projects. The project sponsors submit the projects. The scoring committee scores the projects. And then we take the scored projects and recommend the projects to fund to the board of directors. The board of directors votes on that list and then we can start funding the projects. There's, every step of this process, there could be little tweaks that happen in it. But this is the general process that we go through with every competitive program. We're right here for Measure B. And actually, we went from bullet one to bullet two. I think we're going to go into our third round of getting to bullet two. So hopefully, we will be able to go to bullet three in August. So the idea is August, hopefully the board will adopt the criteria. Jane Shin, running the program, has the key to make sure we're able to get a call for projects and application out in October. And then most likely, we would get applications in by December and hopefully beginning of next year, the next calendar year, January 2020. We would have a list approved by the board. And we can start distributing the money to programs.
Lauren, I think this was the scoring criteria where both Gilroy and Morgan Hill had issues with the scoring criteria. Because I think there were points that were given if you were, your project was close to a big transit or a transit hub or something like that. And I think both South County cities had issues with the fact that we didn't have real strong regional transportation networks. And so we would just not be eligible for those points. And so I think those, that was some of the issues that might be holding this process up.
Okay, I'll let Jane know that. I, I know that the way we've set up the scoring for proximity, there's high may have been low and it depends on the intensity. So it's not that you can get zero points for not being near a major transit center. But you would get smaller points. But it's also grouped in with employment as well as schools. So if you could, if you get to get to those two with your project, you could get like a mid-range or even maybe a high range. It just, it just depends. And I, I mean, Gilroy Caltrans is considered one of the, I believe, one of the high, you could, if a project was in that area, you could score high on that.
If you were part of the three trains in the morning, three trains in the afternoon.
Yeah, I can remember it scores. I'll bring that, I'll send that to Jane.
Carolyn, was that your understanding of that as well, that discussion? Thank you.
But so are you saying though, that if, if Gilroy had a project that was near our transit center, that might help us score better than a project that was several miles away from it?
It could. If you had a project several miles away that was near schools though, that could also score high.
Or, or an express, a VTA bus that runs along Monterey Road.
No, no, if the express buses.
So why doesn't the VTA, didn't do a way with the VTA's express buses?
No pun intended.
You're only here for 2020.
Yep. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You can leave. I'll bring those comments back though, as well as the disadvantaged communities comment about the countywide program.
I mean, the key thing is, we just want to make sure we're as eligible as some of the bigger cities and more well-populated cities to the north.
So one of the other things we're doing because of that concern is, there's actually a cap for how much money you can get through this program by jurisdiction. No one jurisdiction is allowed to get more than 15% of the total funding. And so, you know, who knows, San Jose may get 15%.
And then we'll fight, everybody else will fight for the other.
And Sunny Bell will get 25%. I, I don't know how it's going to work, right? But we wanted to put that in there in order to encourage some geographic distribution that's more equitable. But I think Gilroy could probably do well in some of the other scoring criteria. No one project is going to get 15%. All right, I'll move on to the bicycle expenditure program. So this is, it'll sound familiar. This is our financially constrained prioritized list of bicycle projects. It was first established in 2000 by the VTA board of directors. And it's been updated periodically, about every four years, with the update of our valid transportation plan, which is our long-range transportation plan. That's what VTP and the third fourth bullet refers to. It is intended to help fund countywide bicycle projects. And the last project list was adopted by our board of directors in May 2013. And if you do math, it's been six years since we've updated it. The reason for that is that we did have a mini-update of our valid transportation plan in, I think it was around 2017. But we did not ask for new projects for anyone as part of that. And we were in the middle of this whole, I think it was before that, it was like 2016. So we're in the middle of this whole process to bring the valid measure to the ballot in November. And so we didn't update it for anything, including the bicycle expenditure program. So what does it hold for the future? So historically, we've used this list. A project on the list would get bonus points in some of our competitive grants. Or it might, there, there are some other grants where you had to be on the list. And more specifically, you had to be a category one project on the list. So that's the higher scoring project in order to even be selected or eligible for the funding. Moving forward, we are thinking about what to do with the bicycle expenditure program. Because we're already with the 2016 Measure B, we're already, we will already have a list. We'll have a 10-year list. And staff doesn't really want to deal with two different lists. So I think what we're sort of thinking about doing is eliminating the BEP list and having the funding sources that currently rely on that list more open. So the, those are the Transportation Development Act Article III funds and the TFCA funds. And I'll give you, I'll show you on here how we used it. So this is the slide from earlier, over the last 10 years or so. The squares are kind of approximate. But BEP projects got bonus points on OABA grants. For burbs, I don't believe BEP played into it at all. For TDA III, we reserved 25% of all of that funding just for BEP projects. And you had to be category one, that's still the case. You have to be category one to even apply. And if we didn't get enough category one projects that were submitted in any one year, we would roll the money over the next year and fund other projects on the list the next year. For TFCA, the BEP category one has a first shot at the money. But because we are not allowed to roll that money over, if we didn't get enough BEP one projects on TFCA, we would open it up to other bike projects. So that's funded more than just other bike projects. As we've gotten farther and farther from the 2013 adoption date of the BEP program, we're finding fewer and fewer projects are coming in on BEP. And I think that's because a lot of the projects have either been completed through our needs or they're not relevant anymore. Or cities, in moving forward, have realized that they can't actually get it done. So it is a challenge. I think learning from the BEP, we should kind of think about how the 2016 Measure B 10-year list is going to, what are we going to do with that list? One of the things we've written into our program area for the 10-year list for Measure B is that at the five-year mark, we'll do a reevaluation. And if there's projects that cities are not going to pursue in the next five years, they can take them off. And any, any funding that's been taken off and been freed up, that will then go through another smaller, taller project to see if we can add more projects to the list. So you may make 10 years, that's a long time. There is kind of an escape valve at the, not a guarantee, at the project that comes up at the five-year mark for Measure B. Any questions on the bicycle expenditure program? That's the end of my slide. These are the folks to talk to if you have questions. Jane's doing Measure B work. Amin Sirani is overseeing all of the other, his group is overseeing all of the other funds, the OABA, TDA III, TFCA. Any bike pets that we need? And any questions or whatever?
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I'll open it up here. If anybody has anything they want to comment, then we'll open it up to the public. Anybody up here?
It's time, man.
Any members from the public that wish to comment? All right. Thank you, Lauren, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the draft outline of the county, county bike accommodations. Ellen Tallo. Niran, can you, can you help her put in her PowerPoint, please? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ellen Tallo. I am the County Transportation Planner at the Road and Air Force Department of County. And Zach invited me tonight to present to you the bicycle accommodation guidelines that the, that our department is working on. I presented a short outline of where we are starting these guidelines from to the VTA and County BPAC back in April. So this is a kind of revised version of that presentation. So the reason why we are doing this is, is because the bicycle accommodation guidelines falls within the chunk of updating our transportation elements of the county's general plan. So I don't want to do all these plans, but as you can see, the county is, is quite outdated in its, in its planning documents. And particularly, the bicycle accommodation guidelines have always lived inside the, the expressway implementation plan, which has seen updates over several years since 2003. But the accommodation guidelines themselves have, have never been revised. And particularly, we wanted to, we wanted to update them so that they're not specific to the expressways. We wanted to update them so that they are specific to, or so that they fit with the entire county road network. Also, more importantly, because they're so old, there's just been a lot of stuff that's been going on that we now live with. Complete streets policies that are required. NACTO and the Caltrans, and Caltrans has updated their school design guidelines. VTA passed a bike plan last year. District Four passed its bike plan last year. Old cities are continuing to do updates. And on the expressways in, in the county, right, development projects are continuously coming in for improvement from it. And not just on the expressways, but on the county roads as well. So that's, that's the main reason why we're doing this. There are three points, what I, what I like to call pain points. At a minimum, I think that these guidelines need to address and we want to address, at a minimum, these three focus areas. One, one first, we want, we're trying to strike the balance between designating traditional bicycle facilities versus the cycling environment for less experienced bicyclists. So for example, the county's philosophy and, and policy on, on bike lanes throughout the county has always been delineate but not designated. So in other words, we've always striped the shoulder and, and of a roadway in rural, on rural roads and on the expressways. And we've said, okay, the shoulder can act as a pro-bike lane for folks that are willing to bicycle on the expressways and on the roads. But we've, we've never had, the county's never had a traditional class one, two, three, four classification system. And so, and, and the reason is, because for so long, there is a school of thought that if, if the county provides those facilities, especially on the expressways where there are higher speeds and volumes, are we creating an environment that is, are we creating an environment for bicyclists to invite them into an environment that is less safe for, especially if they're less experienced? So, so we're wrestling with that philosophy and we're trying to address that in these, in, in these updated guidelines. Another area, another pain point is, how do we prioritize? How do we prioritize the areas that, I guess you could say the unsafest areas versus priorities for brand new improvements? So for example, again, I'll, I'll go to the expressways. There are areas where, I'll take Central Expressway for example. There are areas where it looks like an off-ramp or an off-ramp. And so we are expecting or asking bicyclists to bicycle across these, across these areas where vehicles are trying to merge off or merge on. And typically, in the city, for example, And typically, in the city, for example, there will be some kind of striping treatment to communicate to bicyclists that that's a path where you can follow. The county has not done that because one school of thought is that, well, if you put striping down and treat it like a bike lane, it becomes a bike lane. So, but in either case, the point being is that these are areas where high speeds, high volumes, the risk for bicyclists and motorists is greater. And so these are areas where safety, at the very least, needs to be addressed. And how do we balance that with requests for, request for brand new infrastructure improvements and brand new protected bike lanes on parts of Almudan Expressway or other roads in the county? So we do want to strike the balance in how we approach our prioritization of projects. And then also, we want to, we want to find the best treatments for mountain and rural roads where the ride ways constrain. We have a lot of bicyclists who train or ride recreationally on the unincorporated roads. Hicks Road comes to mind because I was just on Hicks Road too long ago. So, and you know, you see all the bicycle clubs every weekend. And they're riding behind and in front of traffic. You know, they're riding with traffic just as slow as fast as everybody can go. And so how do we put treatments down to communicate for both the motorists and bicyclists when we don't have room to build separate facilities or designate separate facilities? So at the, at a minimum, the guidelines that we're working on are going to try to address these areas. The guidelines are not a plan. I think we will, once we get through these philosophical philosophies and policies in our, in these guidelines, then we will look at where specifically, in which roads, and what particular types of treatments. So this slide is showing, and I realize I'm running the street, I'm very sorry. But in either case, what I took to the B-PAC in April was an outline of the proposed guidelines. And although it says county expressway bicycle accommodation, so that's a typo. But what the slide is depicting is the map of the road classification of the county and the, and a list that, a list of proposed treatments that we would consider based on each type of road classification. So for example, like that top right says Principal Art Arterial Expressway. We are looking at, maybe there's areas of the expressway where we could consider bike lanes, where we could consider specific intersection improvements, like bicycle signal heads and other things, different types of striping. And then, for example, like on the lower left, where it says collector in local roads, there's a bulleted list of other treatments that we would consider, like bike lanes again, or share roads, et cetera. And so the point is that the intent, or the intended use behind this document is that we still want to maintain some flexibility as to the types of treatments that each road classification gets. And particularly, we want to maintain flexibility of the treatments, of road treatments on the expressways because the expressways are characteristically different across the system. Capital Expressway functions very different from the foothill. And even though Santa Teresa is not designated expressway, people very much ride and it is, what I've been hearing, becoming more and more of a cut through and bypass arterial for the 101. So usage, Santa Teresa sees its amount of usage. So that is, that's, that, the reason why I presented the outline to the B-PAC was because I wanted to acclimate them to the approach that we were starting from. And that everybody is along with us from the beginning. Whereas, you know, whereas, whereas we could bring you a draft and say, hey, we thought about it. Do you like it? Pick it apart. We started from the beginning and we're saying, hey, are we even starting from the, are we even starting from the right direction? Are we even thinking about the things that we should be thinking about? Are there, you know, should we be totally looking at a different, a different philosophy? So that is where we are. Where your feedback becomes important to us is eventually when we, when we have the draft, we're going to make it available to the B-PAC, to our roads commission, and anybody, and the public, and your B-PACs for review. If you would like to at this point, you can review the draft outline, which will be posted on the website, on our website this week. And if you would like to at this point, you can, but you're not obligated to. Send a letter of, send a letter with your comments to our roads commission, if you'd like to be formal, or to staff. You can comment through your B-PAC representative. You can send individual comments through our website. And I believe Zach has my contact information, so please feel free to make that. And so the timeline, this is the timeline that I presented in April. As you can see, we are, we are not, we are not on track of this timeline. But it is, it is definitely our goal to bring a product to the board of supervisors by the end of the year. So by December, January. So we have quite a work, we have quite a slew of work ahead of us. And we have, we do have a draft internally that is floating around. So that draft will make its way out to the public, is our intent this fall. So with that, I can answer any questions.
When you say B-PAC, that's the VTA B-PAC?
Yes.
And then the roads, who comprises the roads commission? Who's on that?
The roads commission is five citizens, each one, five volunteers, citizens each appointed from each supervisor district, or district one. It's, it's, it's in your head. For Los Angeles District.
Thank you for your presentation. Anybody up here have any comments?
I want to figure out if you could send me a copy of the documentation from the staff later on. So staff should be coming through me if you could send it to me and I can just.
So I, first off, I really appreciate you coming. And I also agree that even though the document's old, that there should be no class one bike trails on county roads. I think that's way too much of a mix. I don't think you'll find recreational cyclists out there anyways. But in saying that, I do want to say thank you. And our commission actually wrote a letter to Mike Washington's office last, I think it was last summer, when all those improvements were made along Uvis Road. And those shoulders that you talked about, that was huge. There are so many cyclists and just the specialized bicycle alentraide that goes out there. That was huge. One other thing I found when I was out there and it ended up not even being on a county road and it being the city of San Jose, but it took me several months to find out whose section of roadway it was. But when the roads get repaved, a lot of times, the top pavement, I don't know whether it's a slurry or whatever it is, it doesn't go the entire stretch of the road. So what you do is you, that shoulder you're talking about that is meant to be sort of like a, you know, like, hey, bikes, come over here and we'll give you maybe two feet, maybe three. But really, a good cyclist only needs a couple of feet on there. That pavement would stop and the old one would be there. And then you would see this perfectly white stripe. And then, so now I can't stay in there because either I have to focus down on the ground and do this so I don't fall off my bike. Or if you're in a group, you just get on back on the road. And a perfect example is McKean Road that's in city of San Jose. They did a project and it looks beautiful, but cyclists can't use the side of the road anymore. And I ended up finding out through someone, his name is Colin Haney. He used to work at Bike Coalition. I knew him from there. After getting tossed around by people-to-people and council members in San Jose, he actually finally reached out to me because he knew me. And he said, I've been reading all the emails and I totally understand what you're talking about. And so does the project manager who rides a bike. And he goes, and one of the unfortunate things is we don't have guidelines for those county roads that they reach out to. So I'm hoping that whatever influence you guys have with their department, that, you know, you can kind of, you guys, I think you guys are doing it right. Yeah. And another kudos I wanted to say too is that for Santa Teresa Road that you guys maintain here in the city of Gilroy from First Street down to Gavlin College, it took us a little bit to figure out how to get a bike lane continuation striped up to First Street from Third Street. And it was done, I believe, last week after figuring that out. So thank you for doing that. We appreciate that. All right. Any members from the public that wish to comment? All right. Thank you, Ellen. All right. Carolyn, did you have a report for this month?
No, I don't.
Okay. Good. Next up is consent calendar. I want to pull the professional development training opportunities just so we can go over that real quick. But if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from the main meeting.
I see.
All in favor? Aye. Cool. So I just wanted to pull the training one, just so that we're all on board with the expenditures that we're trying to, training funds that we're trying to use for this year and for next year for the, for the, both the Bike Summit and the Calbike Summit. So we currently have $480 left to spend by the end of this fiscal year. Gary went ahead and took care of one of our entries into Calbike. And that, that was a $420 cost. There's the event right fees that get tagged onto there. And then he's going to also get one of us into the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition Bike Summit event. If we do that before July 30, before July 1st, I think we save like 10 bucks. It's a, right now it costs $43. So then that would basically take our expenditures to 463. So almost getting rid of the entire amount, which was the plan.
I'll take a look at that. I've actually got it on my calendar for July 1st to sign up because that is the deadline for the early bird. So whatever I can, can't expend this year to jump on before that early bird expires, the 1st of July is the last day. The second goes up. So whatever I can expend this year, I'm going to jump on first.
All right.
And then spend the rest.
Okay. So we'll be able to, like, we'll take care of the whole, almost of the 480, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Also, since we might not be having a meeting next month, I just want to encourage everybody for the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition Bike Summit to take Caltrain up there. I know Chad does it all the time, but I personally have never taken Caltrain up there. And not only that, but I've never taken my bike on Caltrain. And it's the, it's on Mountain View is where the Bike Summit is. And it's about a mile away from the Caltrain station. So my plan is to take, and I just want to experience it and ride it up and take some photos and some videos of what it's like to actually bikeboard first on Caltrain, catch bike, you know, my bike and stuff here, take it all the way to Mountain View. They have a free bike ballet there for it and then catch one of the trains back. Yes. I was going to talk to you about this. Because I remember last time we were there. I remember the last time we were there, remember the guy, the conductor? He's like, where's your ticket? Awesome. Thank you for bringing these. So just, why don't you say really quick what this signifies?
Yeah, yeah. So I recommend your bike on Caltrain, which is a great option, by the way. You actually stack your bikes. So there's four-port rack. It's really grounded sometimes in the file. But that four-port rack, there's in every window lists all the stations in order. So why you just look in that, the station order to see, can I bury a bike? Because that bike needs to go further than me because I'm going to get off for that. So again, just bring your bike on. If there's an available rack, you can take that rack. If you see another stack of bikes that are going to Mountain View, preference is to stack your bike on top of those bikes. If they're going to Redwood City, San Francisco, you can bury them as well. It's going further than you, but tag your bike. Because the assumption is if your bike's not tagged, it's going all the way. So for those people who are going to San Jose and possibly want to train with Gilroy, that's a little bit exciting to the train.
And so is, is yellow signify Gilroy or yellow is just a bike?
This is all bike tags.
And then you write it on there where you're going.
One destination, you can flip it over and write to the destination on the other side. You can write both. You can say AM, 1, PM, how you want. Usually the easiest is just write Gilroy on one side, other side, same number.
Thanks. Thank you. All right.
If you have any questions.
Well, I'm hoping to jump on one of the trains with you. So you could show me.
And the best part about Caltrain is you can have alcohol on the train until 9:00.
Yeah. He knows that and she knows. Party after the summit.
You'll make friends.
All right. So if I could get a motion to approve the training opportunities document that we have.
A motion to approve this transaction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next up is old business, general plan advisory committee, GPAC update. Chad Reeder.
Yeah, we actually got an email. We're getting the band back together. So there is a schedule for two land use alternative community workshops. It's set as follows. Monday, July 22nd, 6:30 to 8:30 camp is at Elliott Elementary School. And Tuesday, July 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:30 camp is at Luigi Abrea Elementary School as well. And then attended a next GPAC meeting is Thursday, August 22nd and September 26th, 6:30. So I'm not sure exactly if we're going to go over that. We probably have some days to get out together. And again, the Monday, July 22nd, Tuesday, July 23rd is open to the public. So you guys will want to.
Thank you. Any members from the public that wish to comment? Anybody up here? All right. Thank you. Next up is Safe Race to School update. Commissioner Sean Reedy.
Let's see, I'll start with some events that happened recently. Zach and I were at a party in the park at San Cyndro Park, representing B-PAC and giving out bicycle helmets and talking to some members of the public. We, as usually happens, we gave away all of the helmets pretty quickly. And it was great there, supporting the strong community that they have around that park over near South LA Middle School in Gilroy. The next day, so this last Saturday, there was a turning wheels kids event where there were free bike repairs. And what they actually do, if a kid's bike cannot be repaired, they even will give them a new bike. So I was impressed by that. I was there leading some traffic officers from GPD and some, some of the young people that are in training, the police officers, the explorers. I was leading them in bike rodeo activities and making sure that some of them were also available to give out additional helmets there. Those went quickly also. So that event was a good success. Last month, we talked about that, you know, we had a Measure B presentation tonight that as, as that funding, as we make plans how to spend it, there's the education and encouragement piece. And the public health grant that's been serving Gilroy is sunsetting as of the end of this month. So public health will only be around providing some training for, you know, parent volunteers and community members and that's it. So I wanted to, this is probably an ongoing discussion, but see if we had anything to discuss as a B-PAC or with Gary and city staff tonight about what plans we might make to try to sustain some of the activities that we've already been having going on in. uh, some of the activities that we've already been having going on in Gilroy. Uh, in the back of the packet, oh, about five pages in the back, uh, we have in here again, the document of the Certs Core Activities for Gilroy. So there's things listed that, uh, are going to be continuing, uh, and that have been going well. There's other things that maybe they've been building and going well, but we don't currently have a plan in place for how to sustain them or to grow them. Um, so currently with the help of the specialized grant, we have a solar zone on middle school. About 700 students or so are getting in their PE classes, bike, uh, bike education training. And that's kind of a model program. The superintendent is excited to try to get that happening at the other middle schools. And she says that she's confident that that will happen, but we're, we're not sure, until it actually happens, we're not sure. You know, I haven't heard that they officially have received the grant. I think she just intends to encourage them to continue applying. Um, so that will continue. We'll be having those middle school students at that one middle school receiving training. Um, but what we've been having, um, elsewhere, and Anna's here tonight. So she's been kind of managing, uh, the actual activities happening. Um, we've had about, there's about 4,500 elementary school students in Gilroy. And, um, the K second and fourth graders, which is over 2,000 students have been receiving in-class education once a year. Um, fifth graders sometimes, but all that didn't happen this year have been receiving education from the police department. And bike rodeos, fourth and fifth graders. So about 1,500 students per year have, um, had an opportunity to go through a bike rodeo at their school. Um, we don't currently have a plan for how we're going to continue that. Um, it's my understanding that SBBC and Ann can provide a letter stating, you know, how much it would cost to have someone like them still coming in. Um, but other than that, we have not made a plan for how they continue, uh, even going into next school year, which will be coming soon. Um, that's the most glaring thing that's missing when we look at the list of core activities. Um, so we want to see how we can, you know, we've, uh, made a safer school action plan document, um, working with the school district, police department, uh, city staff and B-PAC. Um, and we have a task force that's continuing to meet. Uh, we want to see if we can sustain what was built by the multimillion dollar public health grant. And, um, you know, ideally how we can continue building robust, uh, bike cred education program in Gilroy, possibly that goes even beyond what we've already had. Uh, but, you know, currently we don't have a plan to keep these things in place. So we need to start figuring out how we might do that. Uh, and I don't know how long it will take to figure that out. Like I said, it could be an ongoing discussion, but, uh, I don't know what anybody has to say about it tonight. Either Gary or any other commissioners.
Do you want to talk about that? The, uh, funding part, the education encouragement?
The VTA, education.
Yeah, the money, I mean, plans or, I mean, it's what, $135,000?
So, so the VTA presented the opportunity to submit education. I think there's, they identified that they were looking at some scoring criteria that they are generating right now. Um, I think once they release that, we'll take a look at that and, uh, figure out how we get some of that money. Uh, but I think now that we know Lauren and her staff are involved, and we continue to have those ongoing communications with them and see how we invest the benefits of that money, now that we have those, uh, the resources and those, uh, those connections.
Yeah, $142,000 and we don't have to match it, at least what she was talking about right now. That's, that's significant.
So do we need to shelve this until August, um, as far as figuring out, uh, how the city might be able to support any of these things happening or?
We need a champion is what we need. We need somebody who can manage these programs, the district. Um, does the district have somebody that's involved with this? Does the district have somebody that's in place? Um, the city doesn't have staffing to be able to get out into the district and be coordinating with the schools and to do that. Um, we can coordinate with the VTA. We can certainly provide that liaison work to try and coordinate the funding. But we need to then have that partnership with the districts to be able to, you know, have a landing spot for that money and to have that money, you know, be spent. Um, we can't be coordinating at the school district level to be able to do that. So we need to work with the school districts, find a partnership and then have, start those communications. I think that's probably the next step, the way I do vision.
Okay, there's a safer school task force meeting planned for September. So hopefully by then we would be able to, the, the thing is though, as we said, the city is the one getting the funding. Um, the school district does have their safety officer, Cheryl Galloway, who is very agreeable to come to meetings and to support as possible, but she has too many other duties to say be sort of a safe routes to school coordinator or something like that. Um, it's also, and I, I've been kind of acting as that person with a lot of help from Zach and Patrick is starting to get involved in some ways. Um, but it's not sustainable to have a, have the expectation be a B-PAC commissioner be, be an unpaid volunteer doing something like that.
True.
Um, the school district is not in a position to fund such a thing. They're, they're actually looking at, you know, closing an elementary school for an example. So their budget situation is not where they're going to be adding positions. Well, um, they're willing to come to task force meeting and work, but that's why we've proposed, you know, Anna's still as commission for ongoing like three years and different rounds of, uh, engineers have discussed possibly having the city fund such a position through some of these measure B funds. Having somebody that could possibly coordinate things and provide education and network with community partners to maybe receive additional funding, provide staff that could do some of the training. Uh, we've been working on that. We have, now as a B-PAC, we've developed many, many partnerships. I could list them off. There's, you know, probably five to 10 different partnerships that we've developed. But it's just not sustainable to expect me or Zach or Patrick or some commissioner to be the person making sure that carries forward.
So would the city be interested in contracting that with a professional organization like Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition?
Potentially, potentially.
Because I, I would, I, the, I, and I know this is what Sean's getting at, I do not want to leave $142,000 on the table. That is like not contributing to your 401K when your employer is matching half. I mean, you don't leave free money on the table. And I completely understand, I've been here long enough to completely understand the staffing part of it. And that is a huge part of it.
We have to find another alternative because just like the school district doesn't have staffing, the city does not have staffing.
Yeah, and I would be, I, I would be more, I would be, I would be more in support of, of, of the city going into a contract with Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition who's already, this is their profession. They have this and to be able to support a local nonprofit to keep them in the city. To me, that, from what I've heard already right here, that seems to be the only option. Because, uh, you know, Sean might not want to reapply to this commission. Uh, even if he does, he might not get selected. Um, you know, we all have that opportunity. We're, we're the rotating chairs up here.
Does that mean we should create something that helps this all, another subcommittee to get steward of these funds that also works in Silicon Valley?
Um, I, I think this is something that I, I'll, I'll talk to a couple of council members that, and, and let them know sort of where this is going right now. Um, and that we, because we've already been saying this in our annual presentations that we're gonna, we're getting approximately 39, maybe 35, it's gonna be banked. But we just got confirmed that it is banked and, and we already have some sitting in there and it's on their two-year budget cycle. So we already kind of know, we can pinpoint where the money is and we know how much we have $142,000. Um, so, and we have, we hire consultants all the time. That's nothing out of the ordinary. Um, and, you know, I, to me, I don't see another solution right now. Um, the, that, that, that partnership's already sort of with, with us. It's with the Safe Rast School Task Force. Um, I mean, we can't, we can't contract public health to do it.
No, we, we can't contract public health. And, and I would say at minimum, I would hope that we could contract with SBBC. Um, depending on what that contract though, I would caution everyone that it probably would be difficult for SBBC to keep the program going as strong as it is, just working under a contract. It depends on how the contract is written. Uh, definitely they wouldn't be in position to make our program grow. But I definitely applaud them being able to at least keep it from disappearing.
Yeah, and I think that would, it would behoove us as commissioners as we come and we go, like Patrick just mentioned, we've been keeping the sustainability going. Um, it's up, it's up to you, Patrick, you're the newest one, to remember this moment and remember how we gotta keep it going because this, these, all these chairs rotate. Uh, in the last few years, they've never been the same. And at St. Molgova City Council. Um, but we're gonna continue to have kids, um, entering into TK and Kinder that, um, they got a bike for Christmas and they want to walk to school. So we gotta keep that going. Okay, um, I think we said enough about that. Uh, any members from the public that wish to comment? Anybody else from up here?
Uh, so having said that, would it be appropriate for Ann to be in touch with you, Gary, about what? Yeah.
Advocate.
Yes.
You just heard it.
We'll exchange business cards, absolutely.
Okay.
And you're feel, feel free to come present anytime you want here as well. All right, cause I know that, I know that you're, yourself and Shiloh have already been involved with trying to make sure the cities do good things with this money. Um, not just host like a, a cool street fair or something, but actually do it. And I think that you guys have done a great job to us to show us what the education really means and, and how hard it is to do all of it. And it's more than just hosting a, a free helmet giveaway. It goes deeper than that. So your, your guys' expertise, I can't think of anybody else better.
Wow, thank you. Uh, we're just in the process of finishing up a letter to describe all the services we have in right here.
Okay.
I have props that Sean and Sarah just handed over to you right now.
Okay.
So yeah, you can, we won't be having a meeting in July, but you can certainly communicate with Gary and then we can possibly look at that as a B-PAC in August. Um, and I, I didn't know that the discussion would, you knew that we'd be talking about some of these things, but not necessarily to this level. I, I didn't realize we'd be at this point in the discussion tonight either, but, but, uh, it's good that we are because the school year starts in August.
Our next meeting will be three weeks after schools, two weeks after school starts. That's how quick it goes, right? All right. Um, okay, so that was it. Everybody good? Okay, all right. Um, next up is the bicycle fix-it locations. Um, so I'll kick it off. This is a continuation of last month. Um, this is where we wanted to, um, we're getting a bicycle, or bicycle fix-it station donated by public health. Um, and we came up with a bunch of, uh, ideas about where it should go. Um, and then we were, as a group, we were told, go back, talk to the public, um, do some research, figure out what people think. Um, so at this point, I'll just open it up, um, to any of you that have any public comment that you want to add. You got from a friend, from a neighbor, anything. And then let's narrow down, um, let's narrow down a spot. Um, the top three, I believe, we kind of generally went to, maybe more top two is like Christmas Hill Park by the new, um, bike park uh, on the ranch side. Um, and then we talked about Gilroy Sports Park at the foot of the levee. Um, and the other one was, that we talked a lot about was the Ronin Channel. Um, but that we kind of agreed that that should probably wait because the construction is not finished on it yet. Um, even though there's a ton of events going on at St. Ysidro Park, I'm sure it would be safe. It's just not activated yet. Um, so I'll open it up to anybody that wants to share anything or hear anything or your thoughts before we make a motion.
You know my thoughts. So Christmas Hill Park by, you know, when we get our BMX pump track. And also too, since we have the, um, riding for focus grant. Even though they have some tools, but it'd be nice throughout their ride, that you could be right there handy with that program as well. So, um, I like all the options, so I'm not trying to say one of the other, but I can rationalize, I think that will benefit some of us. Take that among for other discussion thoughts. And I definitely think Ronin Channel is one eventually, for sure.
Yeah, I would like to see them, I would like to see them get funded too.
I think it's a great way to show that we're here.
Yeah, so I saw that we did a public survey and, and it was pretty clear what the public seemed to want. Um, and it, and it makes sense. I, I, somebody brought up last time possibly making a list where we, where we have future ones where we think they should go. That might be a good idea, just for the ones that we, you know, whatever we don't select. Uh, and also keeping in mind, um, you know, how might things on a future list get funded? If something's more easily get funded in some other way, then that, you know, that might be a reason to not prioritize something if we have easy ways to get something funded. Uh, you know, like we have future locations that'll for sure be funded by, funded by some developers. You know, it's possible, San Ysidro Park may, um, get, be able to put one there. They could get funding there. If they get Prop 68 funding to, um, revamp their park. I don't know if any of you have heard much about that, but Parks and Recreation Commission has been working with San Ysidro Park and with city staff on applying for a grant that will redo that park and, you know, hopefully they could maybe get, uh, some bike infrastructure such as one of these fixing stations paid for by that. But the trail is not built yet, whereas there's, there's already a need at Christmas Hill.
So maybe I missed something. Did you say there was a survey?
Yeah, so, yeah, and I, I, I shared it with my friends too or whatever. It was just basically a, a simple question of like Christmas Hill Park versus Gilroy Sports Park. And like, let's think of your ideas. And like a couple of my friends said that, um, you know, their idea of, they really liked the fact that it was next to the bike park. But then one person brought up the fact that you're more than like, you're more likely to have a friend in a car with some tools to work on if they're at the bike park, uh, that'll have a pump and some tools to work on your bike. And I thought, that, that, okay, that, that makes sense. Great, great point.
That was a good point.
You know, that was a, that was a really good point.
So that made me think, hmm, so maybe Sports Park or San Ysidro would be better. Cause I, I don't know. Well, Sports Park actually may get some development going on there that could possibly help fund it.
So that's, that's exactly what I was gonna say. And that's a part, that, that, that's a future, future part that I think we need to remember is that where's development happening? There's probably not going to be development happening that's not already in a, their own little contract at Christmas Hill Park.
Uh, one, one thing I'll add, one lesson to say is, uh, go ahead, Michael, cause mine's kind of a tangent to all this.
I have another possible location that I probably recommend, be the VTA station as well too. Folks get off the train, they come from town, do not, and they have a flat. Or I, I see a lot of bicycle traffic buses there as well too. So if they come home or they're leaving for the morning and they have a flat, I think it's playing real big there.
That makes sense.
They already have bike lockers there, right? What is that owned by? Does the VTA own that?
Yeah, VTA. Maybe we can convince them to use measure B funding.
Maybe VTA will fund it.
But that's a, I, I didn't, I didn't even think about that. That's totally true. We're, we're activating that area. We're getting more people down there. We do our bike's work day there. We should have more, more there in there as well.
Should gather around the station.
So my tangent that came up, uh, when I was at Turning Wheels is I was talking with, um, Lisa Duff, uh, one of the librarians there who's putting, helping to coordinate that event. And she was explaining to me and showing me, um, that they regularly have to replace, uh, the allen wrenches. People, there's a, there's a part tool, blue plastic piece that they can actually take the allen wrenches out and every time that those, they have to reorder that. But the more important one is that people also sometimes will damage or take out pieces of the really heavy duty bike pump. Sometimes the hose too, and then they have to reorder it and it takes several weeks. And she was kind of asking me, well, who's, you know, we're currently doing this. Um, but we only do it when somebody comes and complains and lets us know there's a problem. And, you know, we're doing it thinking that we're responsible. I said, yeah, I think the agreement is that you are responsible doing that. But then, you know, I realized, is anybody checking on the ones downtown and who's responsible for those? And, uh, how is that happening, getting paid for? That comes into play with each of these and it seems like there's different agreements around each of them depending on where it is and who put it in there.
So the, the, I, I can speak to the ones that are downtown because those were, those were donated to the city by private funding into us. So that was, that was one of the main reasons why we established that public bike fund is so that we would have funds to replace infrastructure that, such as that. Um, so, and I have ridden by there, um, and walked by there and I haven't really noticed too much vandalism. Thursday Night Live, maybe this Thursday, and see what it looks like. But I know that the, it doesn't seem to be as messed with as much as the one at the library. And then the crazy part is the library has so much foot traffic around it that I'm so surprised that, it must be happening at night or something because the one downtown has foot traffic all over the place and no one seems to wanna take the time to mess with it because I think it would take too long. And there's a video camera on the bike rack and that pump thing, so I don't know.
I was gonna say, yes, there's a video camera on it also, but I think there's details around on how that gets checked and by who.
And who does it? What are you gonna do for stealing an allen wrench?
I say just let it go and buy another one.
If a bike was stolen, video, and the guy, we knew the guy was.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, so let's, uh, who wants to make a motion for the location?
Motion for location of the New Taro Fixing Station.
Which place?
Christmas Hill Park.
Christmas Hill Park? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, alright. Um, next up is, uh, Item D, Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee Update.
So I attached to this agenda packet summary of the now passed pedestrian safety subcommittee as a last meeting. And I went into what commissioners get their thoughts in the short term and long term goals last time, to do a brief overview of what I think is mandated to be. So, this subcommittee brought the body of three persons actively sourced by the B-PAC and were referred to B-PAC by citizens concerned with pedestrian affairs and billboard as provided by Section 6, Number 1 and Number 2 of the B-PAC bylaws. Interested citizens are encouraged to attend a B-PAC meeting, formally interviewed for available subcommittee positions. To be selected for the subcommittee, assistance must meet the following criteria. One, be a citizen for the last three years. Two, have the available time to commit to court the data collection for the B-PAC. And three, willing to publicly present findings to the B-PAC meetings and or city hall. So I also attached additional material in support of this subcommittee. I have it all linked to supporting documentation that is all attached to the agenda as well, including how the data collection will be affected. And I also mentioned last time that I'll be meeting with Gary and Aaron to further dial in the data collection practices in minor city assumptions. So that will be meeting that I mentioned in July. If you have any further questions about what I've written here, it's already available and it's, uh, will be published as well. I would be interested in any feedback or suggestions you have as I push this forward. It would be my goal to start listing members for the subcommittee starting in August and potentially the end of the year. I have a few ideas already of where I could source potential candidates, but if anyone is aware, if anyone's interested in possibly being a part and being a first member of this subcommittee, do let me know. We're doing some good work here and I'm happy to share this.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody here have any comments?
So also, I'm Item E.
You what?
I'm also, I, I, E as well.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, no, you're going to the website one. Any members from the public that wish to comment? There's a vegetation fire right now on 10th Street. Um, I, I just wanna give you kudos like Chad did last time for, for taking existing documents and bylaws and our ordinances and actually doing something with it. For, you know, there's so many people that sit in this position, that sit here with their, their hands and they just wait, and there's those that, that use the tools that we've created and go for it. So, kudos to you.
Absolutely. I second. Yes, so, reach out if you, you know, need other commissioners to help.
Good, I will.
Yeah, definitely. Um, okay, so next up is the Item E, Website Update. Commissioner Flau.
So, in accordance with the established procedures that we've voted in the past at the last session, there is a process for updating our websites. I will be making a formal template representing the changes that are described below and possible actions. We're gonna vote on these items in this meeting. Once this is successfully passed, I'll generate that template and I'll pass it to Aaron to be amended. So, possible actions are, a motion to approve updated bike rack decal flyer and downtown bicycle parking plan and to include updated bike parking map on the website.
Um, so I, I brought this to his attention because when I was putting the correspondence together, I wanted to do some more community outreach for the bike rack decal flyer and I realized that we had three available, not four. So there's three more, three spots available, not four. So I updated the form, that was the reason for that. And then the downtown bicycle parking plan, I was kinda waiting for, for this to, for a formal update to come, cuz all it is, it's just, it's just the bike parking map inside, just needs to be updated, it's just one page. Just, just to reflect what, what happened a few months back. So, anybody have any questions or anything about any of that? Cool? Alright, so you motioned it.
Yeah.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
If I can comment after the item's already passed, this is exactly the process we need to do to update the website, so thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, next up is new business, and this is gonna be the cancellation of July's regular meeting. It's gonna be a nice summer recess, uh, most, most, uh, city of Gilroy, or the Gilroy City Council's on summer session. After their meeting in July, they don't meet again until August, so I think it's appropriate for us to do that. And I've made a, I had to make a little quotes down here that a special meeting may be called at any time for any reason. There only needs to be three of us present to make a quorum, 72-hour notice, Gary's fully aware of that, and so is everybody else. So, if I could just get a motion to cancel the July meeting?
Motion to cancel the July meeting.
All in favor? Or are we gonna second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congrats on the summer recess.
A little eager there.
Yeah. Easy to be done. See you later. Alright, correspondence, we have the Gilroy Bike Rack Decal Flyer, please share that widely to anybody that you can, that you know of, so we can start adding more, uh, those funds go right back into the public bike fund. And then the Thursday Night Live Flyer, that's for the downtown, the next eight weeks or so except for 4th of July. Downtown, we still have the Free Bike Ballet put on by Shifty Cycles, so we're encouraging everyone to ride downtown or walk. Next up is all reports by commission members, I'll let Vice Chairperson Sean Reedy go first.
I, I can't think of anything to add that I haven't already mentioned.
Okay.
I'll, I'll chime in if I think of something while others share.
Commissioner Flau.
Do you want to report this time?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Do you not have?
Commissioner Reader.
I know everybody's got here, I'll just add something. So, last time we met, we were getting ready to do our first inaugural riding for focus ride off campus, and I think it was a huge success. We had a whole bunch of people there, it was great. And Dr. Flores was there as well, as well as school board member, twin, I forget her last name, I apologize for that.
Yeah.
And, to kind of, sorry, school board member Enrique Diaz as well. It was huge, it was great. Having that support in the whole district is great. Our school was very fortunate because it had so many trails there. And I will say, I've seen so many smiles, and the girl crashed, her knee was bleeding, and she, she went the hard route, there was this easy route and a hard route. I kept telling her, hey, we can walk whatever, she kept riding and she kept smiling, and she was having so much fun. It was awesome. I was having fun, so it was, but really good. I see all the smiles from the kids, I really appreciate it. I did actually go back, I helped, we built some story, rack storage inside the containers with Mr. Fratello, and I also showed him, they're very fortunate again because they have the ability to create these smaller routes, he can actually stand up on the sidewalk and see now, showed him some routes he didn't even know they're right there. And they even have really easy ones, so that trike, actually the school had bought a trike for one of their special needs kids. And so they can actually have the trike go off because they have a really nice, easy path paved there as well. And I was just sort of thinking, we have the South County Composite Mountain Bike High School Team, I'm sure that's not the exact what it's called.
I think it is.
It's a composite team from South County that's also kind of has a little bit of support from specialized as well. And Christie Garrison, who is the coach of that team, I even talked to her and she said she wants to help lead the off-campus rides as well, so I reached out to Fratello as well, who's all for it. So hopefully next year, I guess two weeks into our school year next year, we'll be meeting and hopefully we will have one, at least one ride off campus and have some help and support for this program. But I'm, I know Dr. Flores is in favor of having the two other middle schools get this program high as well, but I just have to warn, Anthony does do a fair amount of stuff. And so I, we don't wanna force this on the PE teacher, we want a PE teacher who really wants to embrace this because it is, it is a little more challenging than it is, I think, a standard PE program, so. But anyway, it was, it was great and we had a really good time.
Uh, I, I agree with everything Chad does and I don't know what I was supposed to really discuss in terms of comments, but I, I did think of a couple little tidbits I, I noticed, you know, kind of in, in the media or social media. One of them is there's, uh, there's a guy in Gilroy named Al, Al Roybault, who's a big BMX rider still, and, and an announcer. His son went to school with my kids, but I think he's moving on to middle school now. He also owns a business where he helps distribute bicycles and strider bikes and stuff to Walmarts and things like that. But what I saw from him is he was promoting and attending a program where they actually are teaching kindergarteners how to ride striders at school in some communities. So just, you know, these are ideas that, who knows, we could possibly help something like this move forward in the future. Also, I noticed Cupertino has a really robust bike ped coordinator program and safe-to-school stuff, and I noticed they're even doing some fee-based work with YMCA and possibly the city where parents, they don't have specialized program, but middle school students can go with their parents and do a fee-based thing where they get instruction from the cycling instructors on how to safely ride bikes to school. So there's opportunities possibly to work with our rec department or something, or YMCA to have bicycle education as well. But I kind of, Gary was saying, with all this saying for years, without somebody to coordinate these things, a lot of these things aren't gonna really take off off the ground without a whole bunch of volunteer hours by someone or someone being paid to bring all these kinds of things together and make it happen.
Um, so I had the opportunity last month, or actually a couple weeks ago, to visit the state Capitol. Myself and my daughter Avery visited our Assembly Member Robert Rebus, who's our Assembly District 30 here for Gilroy. And it was fun, we got a tour of the Capitol, we had a viewing session of the assembly. And there's a couple of bills that are going through right now, one of them is called the Better Bike Ways Bill, AB 1266. And that pretty much talks about exactly what happened on, on 3rd Street or on Santa Teresa, the connection to 1st Street. And in some of these areas, the, the, it's against the law for a cyclist to be in the right-hand lane, but then wanna continue forward and go through there when there's no place for them to go, there's no bike lane established. So what that bill will do is make it legal for them to be able to not be forced to make a right turn if they're in the right turn pocket, but actually go straight, but at the same time have Caltrans develop design guidelines so that there are no gaps like that anymore, that, that it, you show the cyclist exactly where to go. Another one that's making through right now that, that really just chimed in of what is going on or what's gonna be going on this summer on 1st Street for us already is there's a Complete Streets for Active Living bill. And that basically, it'll end up mandating Caltrans to design these highway bypasses such as ours, Highway 152, to, for living, not just as a truck bypass or a car bypass. And so a lot of the stuff that we're already implementing, I got to talk to Assembly Member Rebus about, and just sort of told him like, hey, you know, this stuff is actually happening in your district before a lot of these bills are even coming down. And, and I, I think that that's attuned to a lot of good advocacy and, and a lot of good, you know, nice heads up from our previous, uh, city transportation engineer to get that study done, cuz I know that, that study, you know, everybody took it to heart. And I know we did too in our, sort of our city council, so that, I, I had a good time talking with him and he's a good ally for us for bike ped activities. And one of those that I'm working with them now on is a Long Hecker Pass, we've always talked about how the shoulder is slowly disappearing from Santa Teresa out to Watsonville Road. And this kind of goes back to talking about the county roads guidelines that we talked about earlier. It's like, well, if there's no space for a cyclist to ride, and it's not for recreational cyclists, but you can't push the cyclist into the road, you gotta give him some shoulder, and the shoulder on Hecker Pass has slowly gone away with debris and weeds and grass.
Trees.
And trees. And so when I was visiting the state Capitol, the DODR cedars were beautiful in front of the state Capitol. They were limbed up, they were looking fresh, they were a symbol, they were given, I believe, I don't know if they're given by China, but they're native to China, they looked beautiful. Well, that doesn't exist out here on Hecker Pass Highway, it's horrible. And there's a lot of people in this community that know that those are historic trees, but that nobody wants to touch them. And I don't know whether it's because Caltrans, the, the workers don't wanna get near them or what, but I reached out to his office, and I did this personally, we have a, you know, I filled out an intake form and they're gonna figure out what's going on, why. It was over a year ago when myself and we're, and Chad submitted those ticket requests to just get them to clear back the, the weeds and the, and how.
We should do another.
Well, it was kinda nice because I, all the information that I gave his staff member was, yeah, this is all from August 2018. Work with it.
Didn't it work?
Huh? Not yet.
No.
We'll see what happens. But there was nobody, there was literally nobody else to work with, I worked with Sergio.
I gotta go to the state Capitol.
I worked with Sergio, the Caltrans Bike Ped Coordinator, who was wonderful and he, and he helped a lot, but it hasn't worked. And so, that, that's why we have elected officials. Our annual presentation to the city council will be November 4th. People for Bikes, the BMX track-specific grant is happening this fall, it's specifically for BMX tracks, up to $10,000 can be awarded. Garlic City BMX is gonna be writing a letter of interest to apply for this grant, I've been keeping in touch with them and their group as they're getting ready to build the bike park. And they might be looking to us to give a, a letter of support for it. So I told them that they can come and ask for that whenever they, whenever they need it. And the, the fundraising is great, it goes to designing the track, you know, locations, moving dirt, whatever, they just wanna be, they moved off all their other items that they provide grants for and they're specifically looking at track building. So that was, that was really good news. I'm hoping to also have some several updates after a little summer recess on items that we've been going, that we have been working on, that we're aligning with the Chamber of Commerce. One of those is bringing like a car share company that we've talked about. GIG Car Share is one of them that's shown interest in coming and presenting, and the Chamber of Commerce, I'm gonna work with them as well, to try to get more, more options, more transit, more shared microability. And one of those things is, is also, I encourage you guys to join me, so next Monday, I'll be at the city council meeting, advocating and asking the city council to bring the white paper that, that staff says that they've done for the e-scooter, e-bikes. I believe that, you know, that there's been enough time and I'm sort of, I'm getting worried that the moratoriums that some of these cities have put on, these e-scooter companies are gonna slowly start lifting. And everybody that has had a chance to look at best practices and what works, I believe that those smaller cities like ours are gonna start doing, you know, opening up their, however they wanna do it, whether it's an RFP, opening up, you know, licenses to permits, I just think that it's gonna start getting really busy again. And it's something that this, this council, this city, this commission has always supported. I think that we got a great allies and relationships from City of San Jose, the person I was talking about earlier, Colin, he, he talked to me a lot about the outreach that they've done with their e-scooters and the, and the e-bikes. And also, I mean, it just goes a, a long way to creating solutions for the increasing traffic that we're, we're getting in our towns and also at the same time that you'll keep hearing over and over again, and I heard it the other day from, during the G-PAC update to the city council, is that, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, like this constant verbiage of, of that. So I'll be there updating them on that. And I just kinda wanted to throw in a needs, I've done a lot of events for us so far, and I don't know how we can get this, and I know that we've asked Gary to, to talk to finance about what we can get out of the public bike fund to support us, when it's not necessarily, you know, replacing a bike rack, but when me and Sean were at this last event, we're using all of our own. rack, but when me and Sean were at this last event, we're using all of our own stuff. Um, using our own tables, my pop-up, um, you know, uh, we, we, we reused a banner for two years that Neuron gave us and it was great, but.
We broke one of those last month.
Yeah, a pop-up broke. The paper banner, it looks awesome, but it's, it's, uh, it finally just got blown around and ripped and, and it just, it doesn't look professional, it looks like we just put it together. So needs, uh, a pop-up would be wonderful, a tablecloth, some clips to hold the tablecloth down so it doesn't blow away. Um, and then me and Sean also talked about, a lot of times they have this passport system where the kids or the adults, they, they have to go around to each station, like you guys did that at Public Works, and each station has to either sign or autograph, we didn't have a stamp or anything. And I was literally, I autographed, I don't know, th- three hundred, three hundred passports and I was like, Sean, we gotta get a stamp. Gotta get something, something easy, whether it's a picture of a bike or, or something on there, it would, would be nice. So I'll just, I'll just throw that out there. Um, that's it, that's all I have. Uh, staff comments?
Do I comment on all that stuff you just brought up?
This is your, this is your opportunity to use it, well, you want to use it.
Um, all that stuff you're asking for is great to bring under the budget process. Um, so make a list, so when we come back around to the budget and ask for budget items, ask for those things, because I don't have a problem putting in for a pop-up or putting in for those types of things, that's the appropriate time for it. I think using, and I haven't heard back from finance, I asked again today.
I asked you, to see, I bought price.
That's good. I asked price again today.
Yeah.
And I said, okay, this fund, where they're getting donations of money for bike racks, can we use it for anything besides bike racks? And I asked him specifically, they're asking about donating money, and he kind of hung it on, uh, let me look into it. So I, you know, I'm trying to get an answer for it. It's going to come back, you can only use it for the intention used. And from what I'm understanding, you know, key initially off the cupset and they don't have access to it, they can only recommend to council how to use it and it has to be dedicated and used by the council owner.
So.
And I said, but that's not how we're.
So that, that's not true. That's, and I, and it's not true because we're marrying exactly what Public Art Committee does and I've already talked to their staff and it's very clear.
And that's what caused some.
Yeah.
I said, that's not how we're using it because, you know, if you guys are out there buying stuff based on the donations, you're giving me the invoices, I'm putting the account on there.
Yeah.
And that's how it's getting purchased.
Yeah.
And he went, let me look into that. So, you know, that's kind of a ref. Um, so I don't have an answer for you on that one. The white paper is a work in progress, it is a, to be honest, again, like I keep saying, month to month, it's not a, it's not a priority thing for us, it's a low bandwidth, it's bandwidth thing. I've got so many people working on so many different things. Um, you tell me what not to work on from month to month and I'll work on that from that month. Um, you know, I've got, we got one neuron. A rack. Uh, Neuron has a task with getting that thing done. Um, he's been working on getting the paving program done. So if you, you know, and I don't want to be a smartass, but, you know, I'll, I'll delay the paving program if we want to do the striping, we're putting in new bike lanes next month and I'll work, have them work on that instead, but we've only got so much time to do certain things. Um, come to the meeting, indicate your interest and we'll put it back on the list of priorities. Uh, but that's kind of where we're at at this point, we only have so many people to do so many things. And it's, it's, it's based on what the council directs us to do.
Yeah, and it, and it was.
That's what they'll direct us to do.
Well, it was, in November 2018, they were, you, council directed city administrator to agendize it, bring it back. And it hasn't happened since November.
And that, that will be our responsibility.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and we'll talk about, our priorities, so if the council gives this direction, we'll bring it back. Um, so that's, that's what we'll do. Um, we, I did talk to Rochelle, we will be running the, uh, Don't Block the Bike Claim with the Trash and Semperals in the next email express.
Yeah.
That's a lot of block.
Nice, nice. That's all I got. Cool. Um, agenda items for next meeting. So I have one to bring up. Did you guys want to try to draft a letter to county, to the Roads Commission about the, any, anything that we have to add for right now or while they're doing the draft?
Bring it back up for discussion? Or do you have to be the draft?
Yeah, and that seems like she wasn't, wasn't too sure, like you don't have to provide input now either, I think the fact that she came here was input enough. And then maybe we could wait until the actual public comment period comes around and we could take a look at it and then at that point, um, I mean, just a letter of support, I think would be good. And maybe with comments in there, I, I definitely want to be able to put that comment in there about the, the pavement, uh, the way they seal the top. Um, I want to make sure that that ends up in there.
Yeah, I imagine, I think, I think it never hurts to say, hey, we're here, you have any questions?